This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The final notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on east and west side of the council chambers, as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anybody with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it in silent mode for the duration of the meeting. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV, so you're all aware. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, seven PM. Councilwoman Dawn Clayton.
Here.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Sauer Ann Towery.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Seifex.
Here.
Tony Carrillo.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
All right, the, actually, the agenda has not, has not changed in any way. We're going to be approving, going for the approval of minutes from September twenty-fourth. We have one application from G-E-C-C F-L-P that was carried from September twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, on Fourth Avenue. And we have a few resolutions that will be going through for approval, and that's pretty much it. We have our minutes. Board Secretary?
Motion?
Motion to accept.
Make motion to accept the minutes. The only, I had one thing.
Second? Okay.
Here's a question.
I just had one question about it, Barb. Is that on the first item on Old Business where it said the four forty, five forty-five late? I remember that there was one vote that we took where Alexis said no, and John abstained. I wasn't sure if that was this one.
Yes.
Okay, so then the voting on that in favor may be a little off.
There were two abstentions, John and someone else. It's in my resolution.
Trudy.
Trudy.
Trudy abstained, and Alexis voted negative.
And I think Alexis voted no.
Correct.
It's noted in the resolution.
Okay. Otherwise?
On page three, there are two typos.
Okay, we'll fix it.
I'll give them to Jack at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Otherwise?
On the minutes?
On the minutes, page three.
Oh, oh, okay.
You can just mark it up, I'll see.
Otherwise?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
With the corrections opposed?
All right, we're ready for the application?
For the record, this was carried without further notice, required jurisdiction on September twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Thomas J. Hirsch, representing the applicant. Excuse me. I have tonight the representative of our tenant, which is the Asbury Park Board of Education. The owner is here in case we need some additional information relative to history of the property or whatever. And we have an architect and planner, same witness, Mr. O'Neal, that will be testifying tonight. The critical issue, obviously, in this case, is the parking variance. There's some technical issues raised in the reports, which we'll address, of course, and some of it has been addressed in the interim since we received the reports by our architect. So normally, I would call up our architect and go through the plan and so on and so forth, but I think it's important, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought maybe we had a new member coming in.
We smelled natural gas outside, so we called the fire department. There is a gas leak over on Springwood Avenue.
We're safe. Okay. But I think it's important that the board understand exactly how the site is currently used and what the intention is with the tenant, which is, you know, we believe, a long-term tenant. So I'm going to call a representative of the Board of Ed first to explain the operation at the site, how it exists, the purpose of converting this existing space, because we're not actually expanding the building per se, we're re-converting space within the building. We're not changing the footprint or adding another floor or anything like that. So with that, I think you'd better off hearing from my witnesses than me, so we're not going to go through a lot of other preamble. So I'd like to call Jeffrey Hastings as our first witness, if I might.
Please answer your question. Do you swear or firm the testimony during the proceedings? Will be the two for which they're coming to the court.
I do.
Get your name to the record.
Jeffrey Hastings.
Your last name, please.
H-A-S-C-I-N-G-S.
All right, Mr. Hastings, would you first explain to the board your position with the tenant in the building, which is the Board of Ed?
I'm the business administrator for the Asbury Park Board of Ed. I've been with the district for about thirteen years, seven of which have been in my current position.
And the site, which is the subject matter of this application, what is that site currently used for in relationship to the Board of Ed?
It's the, excuse me, Board of Ed's central office, so administrative staff is there.
All right, and is that where you have your offices?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how long has the Board of Ed been a tenant in this building?
Approximately four years.
Okay. And during that four years, has the nature of the operation, the Board of Ed's operation, changed at all?
No, not particularly, no.
Okay. All right, now, as you know, and as I briefly mentioned to the board, this application deals with the reconfiguration, if you will, of space that already exists in the building. And there's been information submitted with the application, but I'd like you to testify as to what is the impetus of that request tonight for that, the change in that space?
So the, excuse me, the Board of Ed has been there for about four years, and we've had talks on and off with the owner about the space and any kind of improvements we can make. One of the issues with the former superintendent, the current superintendent, was meeting space. So the building has approximately, what was she? Approximately three conference rooms, however, the maximum capacity of any of those conference rooms is about eight to ten people. The Board, or the Board of Ed on a monthly basis has a administrators' meeting, which is about twenty-five, thirty tops people in attendance, where we meet from approximately two forty-five to four forty-five once a month, go over district initiatives, district goals, talk about any changes in law, any changes in terms of directives, those sorts of things, operational matters, and disseminate that information to those folks, which are principals, vice principals, and supervisors.
Now, are any of the, you use the term administrators, that would attend these meetings, or any of those, do any of those people already have offices in the building itself, that they were present there?
Yes.
Okay, and about how many of the people or administrators that would attend this meeting you just referred to are already at that building?
I would say six to eight.
Okay. All right. And where are the other administrators coming from?
They're at our six other locations, at the schools and at our IT building, which is over on Park Avenue.
Okay. So, and what is the proximity of some of the other schools that would be sending representatives, if you will, to the meeting, in terms of proximity to this building?
So the high school is about three blocks away, and our Bradley Elementary School's two and a half to three blocks away as well. So they would each be sending two to three representatives each.
Each? Okay. And to your knowledge, do you know if any of those representatives simply walk to your building as opposed to leaving their, wherever they are parked and parking somewhere else?
They do, on occasion, yes.
All right. All right, and other than that, that one, that was one meeting a month, as you described at that particular meeting?
Yeah, one meeting a month for about two hours.
And would the conference room be used for other meetings, you know, say, in a monthly period, where additional people, other than the people in the, that already are in the building, would be attending?
No, there would be no scheduled monthly meeting. The meetings would be ad hoc or sort of just as needed, but nothing scheduled, nothing that we would have on a regular basis.
During the normal work week, would this, this area also be used for people within the building that have small conferences or whatever else they might do?
It could. For example, we have auditors in the district, we have two groups of auditors in the district this month, so we had a space issue this morning, so we could put one group of auditors there. But, yeah, it'd be small groups that would use it, that are already within the building.
All right, and currently, how many employees would be present at the building at any one time?
There's about twenty-five.
And are that twenty-five that are there all day, or are they, they're part of the day, or how does that work?
Well, some of them are supervisors, subject matter supervisors, special education supervisors, so they would report in the morning and then may leave during the day and go out to the buildings for various purposes.
Go out to various schools, you mean?
Yes.
For various purposes. And about how many of those people then would be reporting in in the morning, so to speak, and then, and then leaving and going about their business during the day?
I would say about five.
Okay. And currently, is the area that we're discussing, that's to be converted, how's that area used? Does anybody park there now, that you're aware?
No, no.
And does the Board of Ed use that area for any particular use right now?
That area's not being used right now.
Used for storage at all?
We did, but we made another arrangement for storage.
Okay, so it's essentially not really been utilized?
Correct.
All right. Now, has, to your knowledge, has there been any issue with your employees finding parking in, either on the site or in the area?
No, no issues. We haven't received any complaints. Had recent construction, which I'm sure the council's aware of, that moved us out a little bit while they did street construction on Fourth Avenue, but aside from that, no, no parking issues.
All right. And as a result, this, were granted, is there intent to increase the number of employees at the building?
No, no, not at the building.
Is there any intent to add any additional shifts or anything like, anything like that?
No.
No increase in intensity whatsoever?
No, it's strictly a meeting room. Wouldn't bring any additional staff over for permanent placement there. It's to house this particular meeting, which the superintendent felt was important to have at central office, and it's just an additional space that we could utilize if, if needed.
And so that's why you approached the, the owner, who's the applicant technically, about that conversion?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have right now for Mr. Hastings. Open them up to the board.
Mr. Hastings, you mentioned something about the conference rooms. Could you explain the conference rooms that are there now?
So there is one room on the first floor that's more of an office size.
Okay.
That, I had, actually, that's where I put our auditors this morning. That was five people, and they were a bit cramped in there. So that's really just a small office that we utilize as an empty open space. On the second floor, there's one conference room. There's a conference table there that could comfortably fit eight people, and then sort of in ancillary seating, maybe another five or six. And then on the third floor, there's a similar room, because it's right above the existing second floor space, so that's set up the same way. And then we have a training room that's also on the third floor, that is similar in size, probably a little bit smaller.
Okay.
Mr. Hastings, is there any reason that the new conference room had to be on the first floor?
The conference room in question?
Yes.
That's the only available space to expand to.
Could there be a second floor put above that? You're going to have to renovate that space anyway. Is it possible to put a second floor and put your conference room on the second floor?
Well, there's no existing space on the second floor. If you were to build up above that area, I suppose you could mirror that footprint, but that's a cost issue for the owner and what we would pay in any additional rent.
And is there any, is there any reason why nobody uses the ten parking spaces that are in existence?
My understanding and talking to the owner, that they were for compact and small vehicles, so we didn't utilize that. And the secondary reason is, we didn't want to get into who could or could not park in there, because we have twenty-plus employees and, you know, we've become an issue about who's allowed to have inside parking versus outside parking.
I'll go over a little bit of the history of that with our architect, with the architect when, two thousand five, when this building was taken over by the owner.
Right. Right, we'd like to, we'd like to get into some of those numbers of how many you should have versus how many you have already, that type of thing. That'll be later, all right? That's fine, we'll talk about that later.
I have a question, Ed, about the number of administrators who come in for those monthly meetings. I believe you said there were something like twenty or twenty-five administrators that attend these monthly meetings?
Yes.
And six to eight are already in the building, so we got another eighteen, fifteen coming in from outside.
Yes.
Okay, and they generally have been walking?
Well, they're, they're coming from our various schools. So we have the high school, which is three blocks, and we have the Bradley Elementary, which is about three blocks. The other schools are further. We also have the IT building, which is on Park Avenue, which is further, so those folks would drive. It would be up to those folks at the closer buildings, you know, weather permitting, that sort of thing, if, if they would walk or not, or their health consciousness and those sorts of things.
Are, do any of these meetings go into the evening?
No.
Couple of quick questions, you already touched base on. Don't get me in about, how many full-time employees are working at that building now? I mean, this has got to be an easy answer, I would think. Somebody has an office, somebody has a desk. It can't be about twenty-five, it's got to be, well, it's twenty or it's thirty. I mean, so about twenty-five could be a big difference.
Right, well, that number, well, currently, the number, I would say, is, is twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven now, and then when you have conferences, how many more would be added? From every, from the?
From the buildings.
From, from the six other schools?
So I'd say fifteen.
So we're up to?
So you're looking at a principal and a vice-principal each school, so five schools, so that's ten.
So we're up to forty-two. Okay. So these are monthly meetings with approximately six schools. There's no other place in the district these monthly meetings could be held at?
Well, it'd be the five schools and our IT people from the IT center. Meetings are currently held at the high school, but they're held in educational spaces, so we're holding that at the library.
And, and, okay, we'll let John finish, I mean, I don't know.
And going to what Jim was talking about, could the conference rooms that you have now that seem very small, could they be expanded without reducing the parking? Because, as everybody knows, in Asbury Park, parking is a problem in that block you're talking about. If you go to the eight-hundred block of Fourth, you have Interfaith, which does not have enough parking. We lost parking spots along, what's the name of the street?
The north side of it? Oh, Steiner Place.
Steiner Place, because of DOT, which is Georgie's and everything else. We have that humongous building across the street from you that we do not know what it's going to be, but eventually, they're going to come in for parking, so. And again, I live on Fourth Avenue, so I'll go up and down Fourth Avenue, and I see how much the parking is, I went by today, and there is no parking from, I'm going to say, from Main Street to Langford on either side. So by adding another fifteen spots once a month, it's definitely going to go into a residential neighborhood, and that's the thing that we're, again, parking is the problem in Asbury Park. Jeff, you knew that.
I understand your concerns.
When you were downtown, you knew that.
Right, yeah, we had parking in the garage there at six oh three Madison over there. My only point would be, so when you're talking about parking, where, the Board of Ed is probably taking up just that block between Memorial and the next street west on Fourth Avenue. And I don't know that we take up that entire section.
Well, today, I don't know, if you had an in-service going on or not, but that, that entire block was taken up on both sides, and I don't know what you had going on. And again, there is nothing on the eight-hundred block, there is nothing on the other side streets, and again, we have that big elephant in the room as far as the building across the street from you, which we know is going to require some parking down the road, so, you know, I think.
My only point would be, we're looking at two hours once a month, so.
So my only point would be, like, continue having it at the high school.
Right, because, because at the same time, there's also notes in here that say that there's other meetings, other events that happen during the month, two other events that we know of. What happens to when you have a space that's eighteen hundred square feet, which is a sizable space? What happens that, oh, well, hey, we have this space on Fourth Avenue, let's go there. You know, that's, it's, it's not, it's, it's not one meeting, one time, it's, you know, what happens on these other two meetings, plus what happens towards the future? Because now you have a great space. Who's going to come, come there? Who's going to want to come there now? Who's going to want to use that space now?
And I think one of the other things the board should probably consider is, you know, let's say that the Board of Ed ceases to use the space in the future, and another use comes in, and now?
Yes, yeah. Now what?
Those spaces are gone now, so, and it could be a more intense use, who knows? So I think that's just something we have to consider.
I'm not sure if that was a question or?
No, no. Just a comment.
They're, they're a changing thought.
Yeah. Just kicking it around.
Quick question. Is there a specific reason for the gate granting access to Lot eleven?
Is Lot eleven the building on Third Avenue? Is that?
It's, if you're looking at that site right over there, it's on the left, far left-hand side. It's at the back of the building.
So, so we'll be going through that, right?
I think that's more with your future witnesses.
Well, the architect can go around the block with you if there's questions about other properties. So the question, just so we're clear, when we talked about the twenty-seven employees, but your testimony was also that, I believe, five come in the morning but then leave and drive, take their cars and go to other schools and other venues, that, that's part of their job.
That's correct.
So they're not there during the afternoon when a lot of these meetings would, when these meetings would are?
That's correct.
All right. The other, the chair mentioned other meetings. There was a statement in the?
Yes, there are statements in these documents.
Yeah, I was going to go over that one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. There was a statement in the project description with the application that there was twice a month, and the meeting, the room would be utilized for meetings between fifteen and twenty employees, and a portion of those were already part of the existing staff. Is that, is that?
Well, I, I think in the spirit of openness, if you will, we do have the one meeting, it's set monthly, and as the council here or board here noted, there's the opportunity to have other meetings if you have the space. So I don't have any specific meetings that I could point to and say, next month, we're having these three meetings, or four meetings, or one meeting, just, you know, sort of the course of business and the way we've operated for the past?
So you were just throwing that?
Years that I've been here, you know.
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility that it would be used more than that one, one meeting that we've talked about.
All right. And again, the timeframe for these meetings is two forty-five to four forty-five?
Yes, sir.
All right. And our planner will, will discuss that. That was one of the ideas we had, that this was not usually the peak hours for residential on-street parking, people go to work, they come home from work. I mean, nothing's universal, of course, but that we wouldn't be conflicting with the peak hours, but this is all part of the consideration for the board. So if you have no more questions for this witness, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I guess, do you have other public that you need?
Anybody from the public? Any comments?
Questions?
Questions from the public?
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call Edward O'Neal, our planner, architect.
Do you sign these where or firm the testimony during these proceedings? I do. So your name, your last name?
Edward William O'Neal, Capello, Positif Capello, and E. I. Elmore, Jr., Asbury New Architects, sixty-five Long Street, right next?
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Neal, O'Neal, would you please give the board the benefit of your educational, professional background?
Sure. I'm licensed as an architect and planner in New Jersey, and actually, in New York also. I have bachelor's and master's degrees in architecture, and I have a master's degree in city planning from the University, University of Pennsylvania, which I attained in nineteen eighty-three. I also be head of the architecture program at Brookdale Community College and have been for the last thirty years, so I teach architecture and planning at that level also. I've been, I guess, approved as an expert in numerous towns, and actually, in this municipality also, although the last time I believe I was with the board was in two thousand and five.
We offer him as an expert in the field of architecture and planning. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, Mr. Neal, you, I don't want to drown down here.
Wait till the trains come by.
Yeah, the next one.
Mr. Neal, you, you were retained by the applicant to prepare plans, that are before the board tonight, correct?
Yes.
And in fact, you were also the architect involved when the applicant originally purchased this property, the application before the board in two thousand and five, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. If you will, would you just briefly go back to two thousand and five and explain to the board what was on the site at that time?
Well, the building you see now was there in two thousand and five. The addition was approximately two hundred and forty-five square feet, which was primarily improvements to the staircase that would be able to access the upper floors of the building, and that would let the building become occupiable from fire code reasons. One discrepancy in the size of the building that's in the report is that the building that was approved was, I believe, fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-one square feet, but the addition that was built was smaller, because we ended up not needing some space for mechanical equipment we had made an assumption on. So the actual size of the building is fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty square feet. So we based our, our parking numbers on the actual building size, not what was approved in two thousand and five.
So the, the, if you will, the footprint, the square footage of the building, other than that approximate two hundred and forty-five square feet that was added, that had been the size of the building for, obviously, many years, if not decades.
Yeah, I, I think our indication was that the building went back to about nineteen oh five or so.
And when you came in in two thousand and five, the only parking on the site was the fifteen parking spaces that are shown at the ground level, not inside the building?
Yes, well, the area of the fifteen parking spaces.
Well, the area.
Because there was nothing really?
Nothing was lined up.
There at all.
That was just the open space, if you will.
Yes, that was the open area.
They get it correct.
Right.
So the, there was no parking in the interior of the building at that time?
No.
Okay. So as part of the application back in two thousand and five, that was something that was offered by the, the owner at that time, who is now the owner today, correct?
Yes.
And there was a mention made by the, Mr. Hastings, that the spaces there were compact spaces. Is that your recollection of how that happened?
Oh, definitely, because that was one of the concerns that the engineer, the township engineer had at the time, was that they were the only compact spaces, because that's all that would fit inside the space.
All right. So the, the same square footage, if you didn't offer that, would have been the site as it exists today, and the most you can line out on that space, which you've now done, is the fifteen spaces?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now, the current application before the board. The, would you just briefly go through the floor plan, if you will? The board has to what's proposed.
So again, the space now is as it, as it was. We're not changing any, any square? We're not changing any, any square footage of the building. Footprint won't change. So the inside of the space is going to contain somewhat of an enhanced security area, which will allow the security guard to actually see the front door. Right now, the security guard is behind the stair and can't really see anything. And then the meeting space, some storage. Then there are two bathrooms and a kind of a prep kitchen. It's not really a prep kitchen, but a place to be able to have coffee and that sort of thing if there was a meeting. And that's pretty much it. There's a new entranceway. The new entranceway is where the existing overhead door is and a new canopy over that entranceway in order to protect that entrance. One thing that's a little different, we have, my client has attained, had attained a demolition permit because we were looking at the feasibility of reusing the slab and not, and the slab was in very questionable condition. And so he obtained a demolition permit and ended up, based on research, taking the, the concrete slab out. And so there won't be a need for a barrier-free ramp or step because now the, since the ramp, since the concrete slab is new, we'll make it at the same height as the sidewalk, and that won't be necessary. I know there were some engineering questions about that, so I just wanted to kind of make that point. And that would be something, obviously, if necessary or if approved, we would make as a conditional approval that we would alter those documents accordingly. And that's it. The staircase that's there exists, so does the elevator. And above that was the area of the original addition back in two thousand and five.
That's a two hundred and forty-five feet.
Two hundred and forty-five square feet, although less than that.
Less than that was actually constructed. Now, the, the building coverage on this property is, is what?
It's forty-five percent. I believe ninety percent is allowed. So it occupies a little less than half the, half the site. And again, it's been there for a long, long time.
And the, the building's also under the floor ratio requirement?
Yes, it's just under, I believe it's point nine six where one is allowed.
So in your opinion, the, the structure itself isn't overpowering the site?
No, not according to the ordinance. And again, there's, it is there, and it does predate the ordinance.
So with the, even though it only has forty-five percent building coverage, where ninety percent building coverage is allowed, they max out on the outside anyway with the fifteen spaces, trying to utilize that open space?
Yes.
Now, I know you've had a chance to review the planner's report. The, he, he raised certain questions, which I think you addressed to him in another letter or email you sent out before the meeting. But just so the Board has this, under the site development on page four of nine of the report, there was a few items that he raised, which I think you may have addressed, but I'd just like to be clear about it. So this is your response. When it was, the, talked about the reconstruction of the office entrance, barrier-free ramp, I think is what you were just discussing.
Yes.
I'm sorry, where are we?
It said on page four of nine of the planner's report.
Planner's report.
Planner's report?
Yeah.
Oh, we reference it. Let's give it a date. October sixteen, two thousand and eighteen, prepared by Michael Sullivan and Dan, who are sitting next to me. That's the report we're looking at. So it's in the record.
So your response is dated when?
He just sent a letter to the planner.
So we don't have that?
No, no.
Okay.
He was trying to.
I, I was just trying to.
Give him a heads up as to what he was going to.
Some things I was going to bring up, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody was surprised.
We understood he was thinking that had to be addressed, and he thought he would just advise the planner of where his testimony would be and referring to a different plan that may not have been looked at. So in any way, in three point one, the, the entrance, did you address that in your response, and did you tell the Board about it?
Yeah, again, since the slab has been demolished and a new slab would be installed, the barrier-free ramp necessity is, is gone. And so the, the building, of course, will be completely barrier-free accessible, as it is now. But the idea of the ramp is really not going to be necessary.
Okay. So did that therefore address A, B, C, the subparaphracts, because that was removed?
Right.
The risk of vehicle collision, vehicular collision?
The wall's not necessary anymore because the ramp isn't there. So therefore, that, that comment is, is no longer really applicable. And the masonry wall details, the wall isn't there, so.
All right, and then three point two is the lighting.
Excuse me one, excuse me one second. Since we're going through the October sixteen, two thousand and eighteen report from Clark Cane and Hints, like, why not start at the beginning and address, like, you're starting at three point one, but like, one point four is like a waiver from providing a parking study?
No, of course, that's why I called the witness first to discuss how the building was being used. And as I said at my outset, the critical issue here is clearly the parking. I wanted to take care of a few of these technical items. And then we will certainly, as we've tried to address initially, and we will go and address further with our planner and architect. But I just wanted to get these, a few of these technical matters out of the way. So the lighting plan.
As I think I said in the email, it, it's apparent that the, the professionals looked at a plan from March, and there was a revised plan in July. And so some of the items that are in question are on the July plan. I'm not sure why you didn't get that, but we had submitted that upon, I believe it was the, the planning offices had a few comments, and we made some revisions as per their comments, and then resubmitted.
So on, so on that plan that you said that we received, there is a lighting plan?
Yes.
With the details of the fixtures?
Yes. It's, it's dated, I think, July third, I believe?
Yeah, July second.
July second, I'm sorry.
Two thousand and eighteen.
If you, if that, it's on those plans, so. And again, obviously, if there, if there's issues with them, we'll be more than happy to address it, but they are on the plan.
Okay, so they're on the plan, but there are issues with that?
No, no, I, if there are issues with them. I, I believe the planner's report just says they aren't there, which of course, if they're looking at the March plan, that is absolutely correct.
All right, hang on, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking for where those are, because I'm, I don't see any illumination data points, lighting data tables. I'm not seeing any of that.
Well, if you look at the floor plan that my senior associate is pointing to, those are the photometric diagrams on the site.
Oh, so we're going on that, on that one, okay.
Right.
Hold on, I just have to get to the right page.
I don't have the sheet with me that has the other detail.
C one hundred, we're looking at?
Right.
Okay.
And then if you look at C three hundred, I think, we don't have it with us because, but that has the lighting details. C one oh three, I'm sorry.
Yes, C one oh three, we have that.
I'm sorry. Should be on the lower left-hand side?
Why don't we swear in on the personal stuff, because they have to come up with a help out?
Yes.
Make me to your address in your affiliation.
Daniel Howman, Clark Cane, Hints, Board Planner.
Do we want a march, or a contractual?
Sure.
Okay, A one.
Is that the first, first exhibit?
Sure.
I have a, I have a question, which is, you're saying that the barrier and the ramp are no longer on the plans, but the.
Well, no, no, they're on the plans, but that, but since July, after the demolition permit was attained and the slab, it was determined that the slab should be removed, it has been, and since we can set the slab, there won't, the ramp and things won't be necessary because we can set them at the same height as the. Before, what was going to happen was we were going to have to raise the floor above the existing slab because the existing slab is so wavy, that that would have created a, if you will, a step into the building, and that's why the ramp was there. But we've eliminated that condition, so.
And the one other question I wanted to ask, which I think you were about to ask, which is that I, I see the, you have these rings on the, on C one hundred that are supposed to reflect the lighting intensity. And there's, you have two on either side of the door that, for the lights that are shown left and right of the door. But there's also a light that's shown on, on the top of the new entrance on C one oh two, and there's no lighting shown from there.
That's existing. Yeah, that's, that, that was from the two thousand and five application, that's existing.
Oh, I see, okay.
Oh, yeah, I have, I have to say that I'm a little confused here. So I thought that we were looking at the parking issue and turning it into a conference room. Now we're talking about lighting and ramps. So what, what's the application for?
It was a combination of more, I think, because.
Well, it's site plan, yeah.
Waivers.
All right, so the only waivers are, I get, I get the waivers then. All right, so then we're looking at the lighting also and the ramps and everything else that. Okay, good.
Now, getting back to the parking, one of the issues raised in the planner's report was determining how much parking was actually required by ordinance.
Yes.
And you reviewed that. Did you give the Board your testimony on how you came to that conclusion?
Yeah, I, I respectfully disagree with the method that was used to calculate the, the number of parking spaces required. My understanding of the ordinance, eight, thirty dash fifty-nine point five dot H dot one, is that, that the standard H one is utilized when the specific commercial use cannot be identified. And obviously, it is. It's the Board of Ed's offices. And it also says that there's a, a thing about shift work, and there are no shifts. And the last is that the, it talks about the calculations being done when retail, trade services, and office uses occur. There is no retail on the site. So I don't think that that's the applicable standard to calculate the parking. I think the applicable standard is the square footage standard, which is the same one used in two thousand and five. So my conclusion is that the overall demand is forty-eight, so the shortfall is thirty-three spaces. And that includes the removal of the ten spaces within the garage.
On the, on the two thousand and five plan, that, and the resolution specifically indicated we found thirty-eight spaces were required.
Yes, and twenty-five were provided, so there was a thirteen-space shortfall or variance granted at, in two thousand and five.
So in two thousand and five, and none of us were up here.
No, no.
In two thousand and five, when you came before the planning board, you made your presentation, you said you were going to provide.
Fifteen at-grade spaces and ten spaces within the old warehouse.
And that was part of the agreement where the planning board gave you the okay to go ahead and renovate and do your building?
Yes.
So now you're asking us to override the two thousand and five planning board decision that said, even though you needed more, they let you off the hook and said just twenty-five, and now you want to reduce it to fifteen. So why should we do that? No, since two thousand and five, the dynamic of Azre Park has changed dramatically as far as parking.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And remember, the, the only addition, that was a two hundred and forty-six foot addition. They weren't looking to build this building or add an addition to it, and it had only the outside parking.
No, I agree, but in two thousand.
They didn't need to give him ten spaces to get a two hundred and forty-six foot addition approved.
Well, obviously, they did, or else they wouldn't have agreed to it. Because why, why would you agree to something if you don't want to do it?
Because they offered it. It wasn't something that they said, this is how we utilize it.
If, if the, if the plan, which was right or wrong, I'm going to have the numbers wrong. You just said it was like for forty-three or forty-seven, and you were going to give twenty-five.
This was in two thousand and five?
Right.
With thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
And we were going to give twenty-five?
Right.
Counting the ten spaces, which again, I'd point out were compact and needed variances or waivers for design width and all sorts of other things because it's a very tight space. That was, that was part of the.
Those are the conditions?
Conditions. And part of the, one of the things that became a little bit of a, of a sticking point was the fact that the ten spaces in the building wouldn't conform to the engineering standards set at the time by the municipal engineer. And the discussion was continuously, but we can't change it because the walls are there and the walls are on the property line, so we can't expand anything. And so there was a question about the usability of those spaces. Now, there have been three tenants in the building. The Board of Ed is the third over the last, say, thirteen years, and no one has used it for parking. So it's never been utilized as such. And so since it has never been utilized, one of the discussions was, well, is that a, a source of information saying that perhaps those ten spaces are not vital? And if there are other people using the building and functioning fine, making it a meeting hall, that would be used, as, as my understanding from discussions with the Board of Ed, three times a month for, if you take, say, a half hour before the meeting and a half hour after, nine hours a month. That, that, the impact of those, during those nine hours, is fairly de minimis. Particularly considering that some of those people have offices in the building, and some of those people would or could walk.
And in two thousand and five, and it doesn't seem like that long ago, but.
Certainly.
No, but, and I can't even remember, and living on Fourth Avenue, the Braver Men or the Fishes Bakery Building, whatever you want to call it, was that still operating under the county auspices? Is the Methadone Clinic anything? Is that part of the reason, like, they said you had to provide more parking because that building was still operational?
I'm sorry, you're talking about the building across the street?
Correct.
I don't know, I don't recall. I don't recall that being a, being an issue at all. Nobody, I don't.
Well, the issue I can think of is that's why the planning board made you add ten more spaces because there was already a building there taken up on the spaces on the streets.
Required that? The applicant applied for those spaces.
Well, that was, it was really part of a, of a discussion before we went to the Board.
I think it was.
Well, my resolution that I'm looking at in front of me says, in addition to the foregoing, which is the fourteen thousand square feet plus two hundred and forty-five feet, the applicant proposes to make additional improvements to the exterior. And then goes down to talk about that the applicant requested these spaces.
Okay. That was the point I was trying to make. This wasn't thrust on them, well, you can't get this without that. This was something they're saying, this space, we don't need it for anything else, so maybe we can use it for parking. But it's become almost, you know, unusable. Nobody, nobody uses it because the spaces are so small, I guess, in part, at least. So it's been, three tenants have gone through here without using this. Space is being wasted right now. So we're trying to use a de minimis way to use it without exacerbating, which we all understand is a parking issue.
I, I think I read during one of the reports, either from Clark Cane, that it's insight that the plans are not to scale.
That's, that's a typo on our part.
Okay, no problem. So the fifteen spots outside, are they how wide?
Nine and a half by nineteen?
Nine and a half is pretty much a compact car also. That's not a normal, that's nine and a half to ten and a half?
No, that's, that's larger than the requirement for the regular.
Okay, that's good, okay.
Yeah, they're all compliant. Again, just, just to, to, not to scale is that their labels is one and two hundred, they're really one and twenty. So the extra zero got in there, and that's, that's, that's the issue.
How, how wide is the aisle?
It's, we, we haven't scaled it twenty-four feet. And then, you know, it really kind of just fit. There's two foot of planting along the fence, then the space is the aisle, and I think there's four feet along the building as a sidewalk. Again, this is my senior associate, Jill Wright. She was also one of the senior designers on the project, so I've asked her to come not only play Van White, but also help with some of my memory lapses.
Hope you pay her as well.
There you go.
So Jack, back in two thousand and five, I, I don't know, was, did they have one application? Multiple applications? I mean, multiple hearings?
They were here November fifteenth of two thousand and four, December thirteenth of two thousand and four, and January tenth of two thousand and five. They're here for three meetings. And I think, to Michael's point, the approval that was given, was given site-specific for the applicant that was presented, based on the needs at that point in time. Which, if you had other subsequent tenants, that's where you run into the issue that you brought up.
And also, if. And also, if the Braverman Building was still being run by the county, and there was no parking on that street, that may be the reason, like, the ten spots were needed on the inside?
Well, the ten spots were needed because they needed thirty eight spaces and they didn't provide them.
Right.
So they did the best they could by saying, put ten spaces inside the building in request of relief from the compact parking space max, which was thirty five percent at the time, and they wanted forty percent, or it worked out to forty percent.
And those forty percent ended up being all inside.
Correct.
Yeah, because the ones outside we could make conforming.
Yeah, I think part of that feeling of the owner and, and dealing with his tenant and trying to accomplish this was, and I know I've said this, and I don't mean it to be redundant, but the applicant was looking at this very small addition to the building. I think the board was very happy with the application back in the day, because the building had essentially not been utilized for quite some time, and it was getting dilapidated. And I, I'm sure you're all familiar with the building and, you know, the area, and it's, they did a nice job in fixing it up.
Did a fantastic job.
And maintaining it, which is, you know, obviously a benefit, a benefit to the town. And I would suggest that the, with that being offered to the board to say, gee, we want to expand the building to two hundred forty six feet, it's unlikely the board would have denied this application, but for somebody offering ten more spaces, especially these compact spaces, which apparently are almost unusable, I guess, because nobody seems to ever want to use them. But, I mean, that's the reality of it. So I, I, you know, I know we keep talking about, gee, we're losing ten spaces, but I just ask the board to consider all those facts. That really is just truly a loss of ten spaces. It just doesn't seem that's how the building was used. And this building, the same exact sized building, nothing's changed on the footprint, had fifteen spaces. That was it, until this applicant offered to put some internally, because he, for that tenant, they had no other use for that space. So it was, it threw it out, but it's never really been utilized, so it's hard to call it truly a loss of those, I think, ten spaces in reality. Technically it is, no question.
What would happen if you resized those parking spots? So that you would have nine instead of ten?
Well, they did wider, but they're not as deep. It's the depth that's the issue. I also want to point out that Mr. Hastings was talking about the, the conference rooms and the, and space and why there aren't any big ones. Well, I have a, Jill, can you just, I think it's the old plan, I'm not sure where it is. This is just the first floor of the building, so I tried to make something quickly, just, I just made red circles. Those are all steel columns, which are probably about eighteen inches square. At one time, they were making automobiles in the building. Back in nineteen oh five, before Henry Ford event invented the assembly line. And so the, the structure is so gargantuan that you could literally park cars all over the building. And there was at one point, Jill, if you wouldn't mind talking about where the bathrooms are? Just trace that whole area, the big area. That was one elevator. It was about as big as a living room, and they would transport them up and down to, so the building is filled with these columns that you can't get rid of. And so that, you can't have a big open space, it just, there's no way. Even though the building looks like it's substantial, you would think, oh, it's not gonna happen.
So, so where are the columns in the parking garage?
Well, they're not.
So, so, so you can re-line? You won't, maybe you won't have ten?
Well, no, again, it's the depth.
Maybe you'll have five?
But the depth will still be compact.
How could, how could the depth be compact if you have, if you remove the five on the left, you have five on the right?
What, what's the depth now?
Say it again, please?
Seventeen point five.
It's supposed to be nineteen.
I know. For a regular size.
She can't test the file unless she's under oath.
Yeah, why don't you?
You can, why are you swearing?
Van White.
Now you're gonna have to pay her.
Jill, would you very briefly give your credentials to the board, who you are, in relationship to the application?
Okay, I've been project manager and designer for some architects for almost thirty years.
All right. And you're familiar with the plans that are before the board? You've been involved with this project?
Yes.
Both in two thousand five and now.
You were one of the same person who I referenced in my resolution back in two thousand five, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so you were, you were about to say something and everybody cut you off because you weren't under oath?
The spaces are seventeen and a half feet, and there's a twenty-two foot cart leg, and I believe they're seven and a half feet wide.
Which I believe is a compact car space in your ordinance.
That's right. It's actually longer than the requirement. The requirement's fifteen feet for compact space. Well, that makes a difference.
So the, to answer your question, to take the spaces out, you would still need to move the door, and what the residual space left would be this kind of long rectangular area, which is really not a meeting space. It's the same problem in the rest of the building.
Architectural speaking, could you put a second floor on that? That lower?
Well, you could put a second floor, you'd have to completely restructure it to do that. I've told my client that I don't feel confident that the walls can support a second floor because of the way they're made. The building was, I believe, and it seems to all indications to me, that it was built in two, two pieces, although it is joined. They're two separate structures. So like, this was, you know, it seems to me that every indication was that it was a warehouse. And so it was built as a warehouse, so it has a wooden roof that, you know, spans to the outside walls with these fairly large trusses. And that's, that's it. But I think adding the floor load on top, which in commercial construction goes from about thirty pounds a square foot to a hundred pounds a square foot, I don't think the walls can take it. You would have to virtually knock it down to, to raise on top of it.
Now, in terms of a parking analysis, you've submitted some outlines with the application. Have you looked, examined the neighborhood, the surrounding areas concerning any, you know, possibility of shared parking?
We've, we've looked around in general. There is no municipal parking. We did look at the number of spaces on Fourth Avenue between Langford and Memorial, which is, I might add, partially residential and partially commercial zoned. We looked at those spaces and, you know, that's what this diagram is showing, the number of possible spaces. I think there were twenty-seven on-street parking spaces available in that block. We looked at, again, we, we, Mr. Hastings had offered the fact that if parking became a big issue, they could do some parking at, as an event location under the football stadium, which is about three blocks away. But the, the general consensus is, well, why would anybody park there? The parking's on the street, it didn't really make any sense. But I guess if parking became unavailable, that's one thing they could do. They were, Mr. Hastings said that the school board would be willing to take that space which they use during football games and things like that for the ambulance and the food trucks and all that stuff. They would open those gates up and people could use that for those events that happen two to three times a month. But again, it doesn't seem like it's really gonna be necessary at this point.
In terms of the, and the board understandably so, is concerned with impacts on residential streets and so, in terms of the amount of parking available, which obviously has been the issue ever since this building has been here, but in terms of the hours of parking, from your planning perspective, how do you evaluate that impact?
Well, I mean, I think you have to go to when is the parking utilized, and if the parking's gonna be utilized from two forty-five to four forty-five, and you take a half hour either way, just for people to get there and get to where they're going. Again, nine hours a month during the time when most residents would not be there, your ordinance does allow, in mixed-use buildings, shared parking lots on that basis. And I think it's in keeping with the ordinance and with the zoning plan, that, that same argument could be made for the on-street parking that's in the area.
All right. Now, I know you, I requested we look from the beginning of the planner's report, which I think we have done. I've addressed the, in the beginning, the parking non-conformity. Obviously, we've addressed with the reduction of spaces, how we calculate the number of spaces required. That was all on the first page of the report. Then parking, you know, the proposed use of the expanded office space, which is on this first paragraph on the second page, we've explained through our Board of Education representative. We've discussed the parking study. I mean, we're willing to take whatever advice the board has in terms of anything else we can do, but we've looked at, you know, the neighborhood. We understand, you know, Asbury has a lot of this. Buildings around this area, a lot of them are property line to property line, as we know. These industrial, manufacturing, commercial buildings. I mean, the ordinance allows ninety percent coverage, you know, so there's not a lot of thought for putting a lot of land for parking. So, we've done what we can, but if the board wants to suggest, well, why don't you look at something else? We're not trying to be obstinate, we're happy to do it, we just couldn't think of anything else.
Right, we did the parking analysis, as I called it, but I asked a couple, on a couple of occasions, well, what's, what's missing that would make it a parking study? And I haven't gotten that information, so I don't know what else to look at, frankly.
So, Daniel, since it's your report, if, if they satisfied all your questions?
Yes, more or less.
No, 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 no.
I don't have any questions that I can really ask.
Well, there's still, there's still missing, we're missing on three point five, where we are, there are prior condition approvals in two thousand five that haven't been done. So on three point five, page five, are we going to take care of those? Since two thousand five, they haven't been taken care of.
Three point five, oh, the prior approval conditions? I'm not sure about that.
Sure you're going to do them?
No, 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 I'm not sure whether they weren't done in two thousand five and, for one reason or another, haven't lasted.
Okay.
So I-
So then you-
So that was talking about some plantings, I believe, the shrubs and the ivy on fencing, correct?
Yes.
My, my own opinion, well-
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, my opinion on the, the ivy on the fencing is that the fencing is a board-on-board fence. And so the ivy will only basically hurt the fence. So I'm not really sure what the point of it is, if, if the idea of the fence is to create a visual screen to the residents behind, putting ivy on the side of my client's building, I don't really see the point.
Do you remember why that was the condition back?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
I was wondering myself.
I mean, I don't think I've ever seen something like that before.
One I've never seen before.
Usually about the fence. The shrubs, uh-
If I may interject, I do know that it was stated as ivy in the resolution. I'm not sure that it was ivy. I remember there were, on our landscape plan, was a trumpet vine and another tree of shrub, which were planted. The owner can speak to what happened to them since then. It was a trumpet vine, not necessarily an ivy that would, you know, huge a fence.
And if there's landscaping that the board requires, of course, we'll, we'll comply with that. I'm not sure exactly what happened, if it died off or what. We could, if it's important, we can ask the owner, but we would comply with any requirement related to additional replanting, if you will, additional shrubbery. Do you know whether or not the Board of Education was the tenant at the time of the two thousand five approval?
They, they were not.
They were not?
They were not.
Or according to the resolution, it was checked in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Jeff said they moved it four years ago.
Four years ago, yes. Correct.
Do you, and maybe you're not the person to ask, but do you know whether or not the Board of Education offered their employees the internal parking spaces?
I'm sorry, I don't know that.
Can I ask?
Would you like, yeah, yeah, of course. Mr. Hastings?
On our initial meeting and walkthrough with the owners, we talked about the compact nature of those, and we did not offer them to employees from the get-go.
All right, so I, I would assume, just my guess, is that out of twenty-seven employees, there's gotta be somebody that has a compact car, if not more than one, so I really can't speak to the fact that it hasn't been offered, but sure, it certainly should have. And if it had, and if it hasn't been, it should, should be. Because compact is compact. There's a lot of people that have compact cars. All right, so-
I do have a question that's unrelated to the parking study specifically. The question is, are there ways that you can temporarily, make temporary changes to that space to make it usable for meetings, but, you know, that doesn't render it, or I guess eliminate the ability to use it for parking in the future?
Not really, and it's really a building code issue. Enclosed parking, if you think about it, with the fumes, is, is a dangerous thing. And so therefore, you have certain ventilation requirements which are pretty severe. And I believe that the wooden roof of the building may preclude it from being a parking garage in a true sense of the word, without fireproofing being put on, which, again, has never come up because the cars have never been put in there.
Oh, so you're saying that right now it's not even?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
But these, but these conditions, the current conditions, also make it, I guess, undesirable as a space for people to-
Yeah, I think, I think that, I, I would think that the building department would have a real problem with it. I wouldn't be able to argue against it. For, for, again, for building code reasons.
Is that even the case? I know that there were, when I, when I came by the building, there's, there's vents on the outside of the building, and we're proposing to put in windows.
Windows, right.
So would windows, would you be able to put windows in, in, in the place of those vents and still have it meet? Do you have that flexibility?
No, because the problem is the other walls are all on the property line. And so, as such, by fire code reasons, you can't put an opening in them. And frankly, the windows, it, it, the, the building code requires, the windows would have to be massive, almost like a parking garage, where you see, like, it's, it's almost completely open. Otherwise, you need very, very powerful mechanical ventilation to blow out the potential toxins, you know, if you think about it that way. That's a, it was a nice suggestion.
All right, will we be going through the engineering report also?
We certainly can.
Okay.
I don't think there's as many issues because of the, I, he allowed the planner to cover the parking and so on and so forth.
I mean, I can, I can just, I gotta just say that, you know, there are, there are, I'd certainly take note of a couple of the issues. We would obviously, as a condition of approval, provide whatever information you need that would make you feel comfortable approving the project. And again, some of those things have changed because of the slab issue I brought up earlier. But we have, we have no problem adhering to what you're requiring as far as engineering details, et cetera. The, the site work on the site is very de minimis. It's, what we're proposing is pretty much the depressed curb at the entrance to the warehouse space now is pretty much what the extent of the site work is, is repairing that.
You have any specific questions?
I have a few comments if you're not gonna go through it all.
We'll do it.
Well, I mean, if you'd like to, I just thought maybe to-
That would maybe be better if you could just point to what you're concerned with. Sure.
Well, well, actually, it's number two through fifteen. So I think that we would like to-
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so number two. I think some of these you covered earlier, but let's go through them again. The applicant will provide testimony concerning three items there about the building being served by utilities. So, are you, are you looking for the report?
Yeah, I just was looking for my copy.
Well, you can utilize mine here if you don't have it.
No, I'd probably do, but it's-
Yes. So, these are the three. Will new connections be required?
No.
Will a new sanitary sewer connection be required?
No.
Will any utility trenching be required?
No.
Okay.
Any comment on that one would be, because I know I read in something that was submitted, that there will be new bathrooms, well, it's on the plan as well. I would just recommend checking with the city engineer as far as sewer connection.
Connection features.
Sure, absolutely.
Number three, this dealt with the existing lighting with the parking area, which I know you, you touched on it earlier.
And again, none of that is, we're not changing any of the lighting. We were adding two sconces alongside either side of the new door. And that was it.
Is the parking lot sufficiently lit at night as is?
I believe so, and that's what was approved in two thousand five. So we weren't proposing any changes, since we're not changing the parking lot.
And just for the board's consideration as well- And just for the Board's consideration as well, you did mention that there's an existing light above the entrance space, and lights that are existing and are adding proposed lighting, they tend to work together, and can, it can turn out that the, the combination of what's there, plus what you're proposing, can be more than what you're showing in the foot handle of contours. So, I would just make a recommendation, I, I don't know if maybe two lights, do you need to have two lights, because you have an existing light there already. One concern I see is Lot eleven, where in general practice, half a foot handle is kind of the threshold of affecting neighboring properties, and based on your, your site plan, there's some villagers who more than have a foot handle on to their property.
Well, again, we have no problem working, working with you to work that out and reduce the, reduce the intensity of the light. My, my concern about the existing light is that we're putting a covering over the door, and that-
Okay.
There would be a dark spot there.
Okay, and the lights above, the existing lights above that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that a commercial use, Lot eleven?
Eleven is-
Eleven?
It's the one behind.
The one behind, yeah.
To the south.
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
Did we ever clarify why there was a gate going to the back?
The gate goes to a neighboring building owned by the, the owner, and right now, some of the paper storage that the Board of Ed uses, that they're using part of that building for that, and so the gate would be so that they could walk to the building without driving around the block.
The next item was four, and I think you discussed this earlier, the scales on the plan.
Yeah, that's, that's the typo, one to two hundred, one to twenty.
That was the typo.
I would, the only thing I would say, sorry, what was submitted, the plans we have in March, I did check if they were twenty scale, and that the spaces were scaling to ten feet, I don't know, just, I would just double-check it, because I originally thought maybe they could be condensed to provide more spaces, but it turns out, the scale is off, so.
Yeah, well, we actually did, although we didn't want to submit it to confuse things, we actually went back and increased the scale till it got as big as we could make it, so that it was a little more readable, which I think is one to ten, I think we just, so we will resubmit that to you, so that they're easier to discern.
Number five was talking about revising the plans for the proposed grading of the new building entry.
Well, again, that's, that's the situation of the new slab, the new slab will be at the same height as the sidewalk, so the grading of the ramp and the, and the steps won't occur because we won't need them.
I would just add to that, being that you are constructing a new entrance, and a new existing there today is a driveway at grade, so you'll be constructing a curving sidewalk with a new finished floor, I would just ask that the finished floor and some spot reading be added to the plan.
Sure, certainly.
You have a survey, so you-
Absolutely, absolutely.
On the second page, number six, testimony about the proposed overflow downspout discharge locations for the building.
Well, again, those are as, as they've been, so we weren't planning on changing any of them.
Do they discharge onto the sidewalk there?
No, I think they go under the sidewalk through the curb.
Okay, so would the-
In, in the, in that side of the building, because again, they can't, it, it's kind of a funny situation, because they can't discharge off the south or east sides of the building, because they're on the property line, so they all have to discharge toward the parking lot, or towards the, what I'll call the alley, which is on the other side of the building, on the east side of the building, and that's where they discharge now. The roof was recently redone, and with those, all those elements were redone, and their capacity is-
So, those won't be affected by the new construction?
No, not at all.
All right, and number seven, loading and deliveries. I know, perhaps we can ask Mr. Hastings that, do you have any information about the loadings or deliveries where, do they occur?
No, my understanding was the loading deliveries were things like FedEx and UPS and things like that.
Mr. Hastings, could you indicate what kind of deliveries, whatever might occur to this site, behalf of the Board?
As I stated, it's FedEx, UPS, the whole driveway, a couple packages, boxes, if necessary, but I think, yeah.
There's no proposed signage, correct?
No.
Additional signage required related to this application, that was number eight. Nine, as already suggested, discuss connection fees with the sewer with the city engineer, this were approved. Ten, again, most of these are just comments of what you would have to do, any pavement repair, you'll use infrared pavement repair.
Yes.
Well, you agree to that. Eleven, concrete curb detail shall be added to the plan, was that on the plan? If not, you will add.
It was, but not conforming to the current ordinance.
Right.
It was on the July plan.
There were some elements that could have been-
So, you're going to submit a new detail on the plan for that?
We'll revise.
To comply with the ordinance. Twelve, the concrete sidewalk shall be revised in compliance with the ordinance?
Same, yes.
You'll comply with that. Thirteen of upgraded utility services are required, are they required?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Fourteen, any sidewalk, again, it's just a note, any sidewalk that is replaced must, the project shall be saw cut to the nearest joint to aid the blending.
Right, we don't anticipate any of that.
We don't anticipate it, if it had to be done for any reason, we would comply with the ordinance.
Certainly.
And lastly, the location and possible screening of any mechanical equipment.
The only mechanical equipment would be the condensing units for the air conditioning, and there's a group of them on the east side in the alley which is screened, which was part of the two thousand and five application, and we would need one or two more in that location. That hasn't been determined, because we haven't done the air conditioning load, so we'd, I, we think it's one, there may be two, but again, there's room for it, and they're in a line, and they just would add to the line.
And in terms of other approvals, obviously, we will apply for any other approvals that are required, if the Board is inclined to approve the application.
I don't see any issues with any of those. No, nothing at all.
Is there anything else in this?
That is pretty much it, and just to reiterate, I mean, the grading we would like to see, just because the majority of the parking lot slopes towards that entrance way, and with the new entrance being constructed, just want to make sure that water's not draining into the building that's hitting that curb and heading out towards the right of way.
Absolutely.
And I, and I think that one other thing that, that we haven't really resolved was that there was a statement about you disagreeing with the number of spaces that are supposed to exist, and you disagreeing with calculation, so, what do, what do our professionals say about the disagreement of the calculation? Because we have to resolve that some way, like how many are supposed to be there?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's obviously not how many are there, it's how many are required.
Right.
What's your opinion as to how many are required?
I, I, my opinion is that the number should be, excuse me, just, that now, well, has, 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 with this application, it would be forty-eight.
Okay, as it exists today, thirty-eight?
Yes.
Based on the-
Based on the two thousand and five.
Based on the two thousand and five determination.
Determination.
But you're not applying for that, you're applying for this use.
Yeah.
Yes, and my-
So, the requirement is forty.
That's my opinion.
With the additional spa, yeah, with the addition, it's approved, yes.
With my, that's my-
Yeah, I'm just saying that's, it started with that, plus the additional space, that's what I'm, that's all I'm trying to get, how we got to the calculation. Yeah, the, one of the things I know, and, and in his report, was there was a mention of twenty-five employees, so he was adding one space for every employee, some of those employees aren't there all the time, but that was the disagreement, I think, to add, because it was not retail space, and it was, you know, if it's unknown, I think it's one for every three hundred square feet.
Thirty, yeah.
Three hundred, I believe.
Right.
So, and I think that's how they calculated, originally, that's how-
Yeah, in my opinion, is that the-
Mr. O'Neil thought it should be calculated.
The standard saw, I don't believe, applies to this specific situation.
And if I may, from my opinion, you know, I, I think the, the parking requirement matters from a bookkeeping perspective, but I guess I'm more concerned about the actual operation and actual demand that is seen today for this use, and we know that there are twenty-seven employees and only fifteen parking spaces, and there's an, a proposed intensification of, of the use, yeah, right.
I, I have one other question.
Yeah.
What's the change of any, because I just think it's, it's a school, so I mean, school-related use, in the summer, summer months, when schools are closed, are those meetings, those meetings aren't held then?
They may decrease, so, you're talking June, July, and August, that's what you're asking?
Yeah, essentially.
Maybe July is not held, so June will be held and August is a re-open.
Is there any less employees during those months?
Well, there are less employees, but not at that location.
Okay.
Less employees in the district, less employees, obviously, in the schools.
And so-
But principals, vice principals, supervisors, they're twelve of the employees, central offices, twelve of the employees.
Okay.
How many employees work in the building, how many classes? I did.
Yeah, we already covered that. All right, so, the month of August, you, you probably would not have the meeting with the other month.
Month of July.
I'm sorry, I apologize, month of July. Yeah, all right. I just thought about that summer relationship to the school.
Are there any other questions by the Board?
Do you agree with the testimony of Mr. O'Neil concerning the parking spaces? Are you satisfied that the wrong criteria was used in coming up with the parking spaces? How do you feel about it?
I, I, I think, I can understand why Mr. O'Neil chose the, the formula that he did, there's, there's two ways to calculate parking for a commercial uses, you know, there's, where it says where the number of employees cannot be determined, the number of parking spaces is one space per three hundred gross square feet of floor space, that's the number that, the amount that he used to get his forty-eight parking spaces. Then there's an equation that is, says it's usable when the specific commercial use, uses cannot be identified, for retail, trade, services, and office uses, I think that there's supposed to be confidence in between each of those, but I can understand why, if, if you don't agree, or if the Board doesn't agree with me. And that requirement is one parking space per employee per shift, plus one space per three hundred fifty gross square feet per floor space, and that's the formula that I thought should be used, which resulted in sixty-six parking spaces, which would be sixty-eight now, let me know that there's twenty-seven employees. It's sort of, I guess, a contradiction in the ordinance that makes it hard to know which one is the best to go with. I would, you know, I, I would, I would err on the, the side of the, the higher number, just because this is a situation where we know the number of employees.
Right. But also, at the, at the same time, we're seeing what, what Mike had mentioned, was that, you know, at this point today, twenty-seven are needed, tomorrow could be thirty, to, the next day could be thirty-five, and we have fifteen. That's the bottom line.
You had mentioned that you had asked what a parking study would entail, and didn't really get a, get a response, as to what, what it was?
What specific information was not being provided that would be, that would warrant a parking study?
Uh-huh.
Because a parking study is not a traffic study.
Right.
You know, it's, it's a study of the use and the parking load and availability of parking in the area, so we tried to cover that to some degree, so I wasn't sure what's missing.
I mean, I think I would offer, and the Board can agree or disagree with this, that it may be useful to have an understanding of what the existing count is now on the street, so take, you know, counts on an average workday during that time period, on several different workdays, just to have an understanding of how many cars are on that block, and then maybe also just a quick analysis or understanding of what could also develop in the area, specifically across the street, what the anticipated, you know, parking demand will be at that site, and, and anticipated site plan, because I do believe, actually, across the street, one of the things they're talking about is having parking adjacent to that building such that it would take away the on-street spaces along the front edge of that building, so that in the future, there may actually be an additional loss of spaces on the street. So, I, I mean, I would offer that, that might help the Board to kind of have a better understanding of what the actual parking impact would be of, of, of the additional meeting space.
Thank you.
I want to, may I just make a quick statement, that I think that this is sort of redundant enough, because I'm sure you all know this, and this is in the, repeated in my report, but in terms of the ordinance's emphasis on searching for shared parking, or, or, you know, mixed-use parking options, I would argue that that only applies to the-
Off-street.
-taking advantage of the availability of other off-street parking areas. The ordinance has specific language saying that the purpose of the parking standards is to avoid any parking being necessary on the street, so, just in terms of the intention of the, of the ordinance.
And I would also add that, that, that the fact that no one uses the spaces that exist today, and that no one has a compact car, I'm just questioning that, and that these should, spaces should be offered to people that are working there.
I don't think the idea was anybody was prohibited from parking there, I, I don't want any confusion about that.
If, if no one offers and says you're allowed to, you know, it was, the testimony was that, go ahead.
Yeah, I-
The testimony was that it was not offered.
Yeah. Is there any prohibition to employees that can't park there?
Well, initially, as you said, it was warehousing as well, so there were files and that sort of thing maintained there. We've since moved that.
Okay.
But from a practical standpoint, my practical and our operations managers, I think we're also talking about being able to park in there, and the type of structure it is, and would that impact my area or not being?
Well, if, if-
It was approved.
It was-
It was, it was approved for mandatory parking.
Exactly.
So, it should have been finished off to code so that the spaces could be used.
Correct, right.
Correct?
Right, it has to be, it has to be, if it was approved for parking in two thousand and five, that area has to be able to handle parking, whatever that is, it has to be up to code, that, 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 you, you can't not do that, that's not, you can't-
It wasn't a voluntary thing, it was a mandatory.
Right, that's, right, exactly, it is a mandatory thing, that if you, if we're saying that you're allowed to use that as parking, and you choose not to, that's a whole different thing, and nobody has chosen to do it, that's different, but it has to be up to code, to whatever that is, it has to be up to code.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my opinion, that's-
Well, the applicant, yeah, and as the applicant, application indicated, the applicant was applying for the parking spaces, whether he builds them or not, or, you know, it, to me, that's not a condition of the approval, it was part of the, it was-
Oh, so it was, it's in my resolution.
It was part of what the application was requesting.
No, the approval was conditioned on ten, those interior spaces and exterior spaces, at granting the, based on the use that was proposed.
Yes.
It wasn't a voluntary thing that they could have the use for checkmate to be in there, and then not opt to have the ten spaces, they weren't given an option of where they have those.
Maybe I misunderstood your prior comment, I thought earlier you said it was, it wasn't the condition originally imposed by a question of the Board, it was the applicant, and you read the application was requesting that as part of the application.
But that's what was approved.
And it was approved, I get it, yeah.
So, it was mandatory.
Yeah, so it was approved, I, I get it. It was a little, my point was, it wasn't that the applicant came in without the spaces, and the Board said, we're not going to approve this unless you put them in. The applicant came in, and they, yeah, right, obviously, if they're going to be used as spaces, they have to be to code, I mean, you can't have someone who is in a dangerous-
No, you can't, you can't.
Situation.
But any, any employees in any danger, absolutely.
No, no one suggesting that, that it should, it should be.
All right, anything else, any questions from the public? So, we have questions from the Board, anything from the professionals, any questions from the public? No? Okay. All right, so, we have motion to open for public comment?
Move it.
Second.
Second. Anyone from the public would like to make a comment? Anyone?
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
If I might, there was a suggestion by a Board member about obtaining some additional information, I'm not sure where the Board is with that suggestion, whether you want us to try to obtain more information and present to the Board or not, I appreciate- whether you want us to try to obtain more information and present to the board or not, I, I appreciate because we were trying to determine if there's something else, that other information that would be helpful to the board, and that's why we thought this dialogue would be best before we couldn't quite figure out what else, what other direction to go in.
I do think that that would be very helpful, because right now, it's a very, very iffy, uh, situation in order to get the number of votes that you need to get an approval, and if you can convince the board that, uh, extra spaces are not required because they are available, uh.
On the street.
On the street.
You go a long way towards getting your ultimate, achieving your ultimate goal, I think.
All right.
Thank you.
If you take account, as you said, all right, fine. Is the board willing to carry the application and to give the applicant chance to provide more information, or is that?
I, I am.
I would move to carry.
Second.
Jack, does he, uh, would the, uh, that motion include a notice provision or what's your?
No, wouldn't require notice, uh, any additional notice.
Okay.
And the applicant would have to consent to any extension of time, uh, within which, within which the board has to make a decision.
We, we waived, you know, any statutory time limits on the, which the board wants that.
You wouldn't need the notice, because there's no new variances or no new waivers.
So what do we do with, uh, what we do, when we carry, what about things about reducing the light intensity, what about the need for the appropriate scale? Is that something that we do now, or is that something that we just carry?
No, I, I think, I think the notes were taken and, and the discussion.
Okay.
Don't, um, wanna revise plans, they're gonna come in with certain revisions, I would assume.
Right, so it's nothing that, nothing that we have to have that discussion, it's, we're carrying the whole, the whole.
Yeah, carry the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Give them an opportunity to go back.
Okay.
Digest what the board has said, comments of the board, and go back to the joint board and come up with some initial ideas.
When you're, when you're providing the additional.
Thirty days.
I'm sorry, he was asking me about a date, I apologize.
It's okay. When you, uh, when you're getting everything to appropriate scale and whatnot, can we have that C one oh four, because I, we did not get that. Which is actually where the, the parking is in the internal park.
Yeah, that's, that's the existing plan for two thousand five.
I did not get that. So we can get, get that added to the package?
Sure.
When you do that, and there are a number of things that I don't know if you took, took note about, about the reduction of the intensity of the lighting?
Yes.
The, uh, you know, the new floor plan, something about the concrete sidewalk detail, uh, and the parking study, okay.
Yes.
Is there any more detail that we wanna provide about what the study should be?
I was, I was just gonna mention, I, I think, um, maybe a little bit further analysis of the employees on the site. You know, do they actually all access the site by driving? Maybe some further detail might help us.
Okay.
Right, and the, the, the concern that I would have as, as part of this also is, is that, that this is the tenant today. What happens with tomorrow's tenant?
Right. Right.
At some point, right?
Do you have a ninety-nine year lease?
You know, what, how long is the lease for, you know, it's.
We have.
Because I'm, I'm concerned about all, that also.
So the board of it was working with the owners to purchase the property, so that we would have permanent location there. We agreed upon a clause in the contract that exists, that we get first right of refusal, if they do decide to go, uh, to market. I think we currently have a, we're coming up on the fifth year of our first five years, and we have four more five-year renewal options.
Okay, good.
Okay. So long-term.
One other thing that you might provide the board would be, uh, with the employees as to whether or not they use those parking spaces or, or where they, the additional employees park, is it a first-come, first-served basis on the, uh,
Fifteen.
on the fifteen, and where the other twelve park? Maybe, maybe you have a situation where, uh, over a period of time, maybe you only have, uh, twenty-two people who drive to work and other use mass transit or something of that nature.
Right.
Right, and, and understanding, like we had spoken about, is it up to code, is that, is that area, the parking area up to code, because we do want to offer that, and I ask that you offer that to your employees if it's up to code and it's safe.
We'll look into that.
Okay.
I would just ask to, um, if they are gonna submit revised plans, that we get enough time to take a look at them?
Absolutely.
Yes.
No question.
A week or two?
Well, be like what it, what our normal.
Make it three weeks.
Very minor variations, I think.
There you go.
Right, because, because.
They're looking at three weeks before December tenth. Do, do we need ample time to prepare the plans before?
Well, you would still say.
Right, to prepare, to prepare the study also.
December tenth.
Well, every time this would be given, every time.
Right, so December tenth, by the, yeah.
If you remember, if you remember twenty-six, okay, is that what the date I'm saying?
Well, no, because if he wants them.
No, not if they need time to prepare the plans and the hours, they need some time to review them.
Two or three weeks ahead of time. We're not gonna be able to. Yeah, I think it's a separate date.
I've got much in the plans, I'm just.
Yep, that's what we require, because, because, I'm sorry, but you're not the only application, and you're not the only clients for that.
No, 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 I, I get that, I.
Really?
Really, and so, I, we ask that those are the dates that we, so December tenth would be the next, right?
Yeah, sure.
The next option.
Would they, December the?
How can we have any of that?
December tenth?
Right.
I, I would think December twenty-sixth is not.
All right. Yeah, I think, I.
Then it's a lot boshed.
No, I, I would agree with.
Let's go with the tenth.
December tenth?
December tenth.
Is that what I'm?
Yeah.
It's being carried to December tenth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion?
Motion to carry to, uh, December tenth?
Without further notice.
Without further notice.
And the applicant on the record agrees to extend any time before.
I did that, yes, absolutely.
Second.
Thank you for your courtesy, uh, and giving us the time, I appreciate it.
Who's second?
I did it.
All right, Mike said, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, guys, now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, in terms of vacation and holidays, let's see, to let it pass. Can you send me a copy of that?
Yeah.
Stand, because I'll put it on file, mine only has like six or seven conditions, I, I, I.
Yeah, I think, I think she.
Yes, what?
This, this is in the general document, okay, just need to inform about part of the original.
Okay, so let's make it, uh, A two?
They do make this in the exhibit, yep.
A two, A three, whatever's next?
A three.
It's an existing floor plan of the building.
Whatever it is.
But it wasn't included in their package and they brought it in, so I just wanted to make sure.
All right, so just make it the next, uh, number, number in sequence and.
Right, and include that in the next package.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, good night, thank you. All right, we have, uh, resolutions, Jack, you're up.
Yes, okay, I gave my resolutions to Barbara, so she has them, uh, where's my agenda? First one is five forty-five lake, uh, today, uh, I checked, I had, I had put a couple of things in red in the resolution, because I wasn't sure if the Steinbach's building was actually the new Versailles Realty application, so in my resolution.
Jill, sorry, Jill, I think, A two, because I don't have.
I originally referred to it as being three projects, and I wasn't sure if it was really two or three.
Okay.
On the parking count. It turns out that New Versailles Realty is in fact distinct from the Steinbachs.
Yeah.
So it is three, I was correct, so I just changed that from red to black.
Okay.
I received a phone call today from the city attorney, who indicated to me, and he subsequently filed it up with an email, that it was not he who should be giving us the letter that says whether or not there's an interim parking agreement in effect, except that in fact it should be coming from redevelopment council.
Okay.
So I immediately, after I finished that conversation, I spoke to, uh, Andy Carras told him what was happening, and that, you know, the city attorney said, it's not me, you should really go someplace else, so I told him that I was gonna recommend that we amend that condition from, change city attorney to redevelopment council.
If they're, if they're the right people to give us that information, then that's fine.
Yeah, and that's, that's what the city attorney's claiming, so.
Okay.
Okay, you know. And so we need to have a slight modification to the resolution, whatever that condition is, to, uh, change it from, uh, Fred Fettow to, uh, redevelopment council, like, because McNamara and Scott can build whatever their names are. Other than that, I don't have any other changes that I recommend for five forty-four.
Yeah, so that, that was item number six, so that's fine, so you can, you're just gonna change that and we're good.
Right.
Okay.
So we have a motion to so amend it and adopt the memorialization, we'll have Barbara give it to now, but we'll, we'll.
Uh, motion to memorialize the resolution with the amendment to change city attorney to redevelopment council.
Which one is it?
My second.
I can vote, yeah.
No.
Mike Van Zella?
Yes.
Barbara Prizak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clay?
Yeah.
Next one, uh, was the amendment that Mark Steinberg had requested on behalf of, uh, Mr. Fasano's project on Main Street to extend out from September, uh, to December, uh, which is pretty straightforward, I don't think there's any changes to that one. So if we want, who's our which board?
Right, it's December to September.
Or Sept, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, you, you got it.
So somebody make a motion, it's, uh, Yvonne, John, Mike, Barbara?
Uh, move to approve the resolution.
I'm a second. Councilwoman Yvonne Clay?
Yes.
Or John Moore?
Yes.
Mike Van Zella?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, and the last one was that, uh, series of development, uh, regulations, changing the procedures internally for land use at the city council, that the city manager.
That the city manager came in.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, uh, motion to approve?
I move that we approve this motion.
Second.
Anything?
Mike Van Zella?
Uh, yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clay?
Yes. Yes. All right, we have, uh, actually, we have, uh, any, any committee updates? No technical review, no design review bylaws?
No.
Nope, all right, we had, of course, I have to talk about the master plan, because that's what I do. Uh, we had a discussion with the, uh, with the city manager, and he had, he had given, uh, uh, CCH, Mike Sullivan, actually, some of the items to, to, um, give, give us some estimates. We gave him ten priorities, and, uh, he's working on figuring out which ones we need bids for, there are some that we need bids for, and I'm asking him, like, what are the next steps for that, but everything, he gave about, probably about five different things to Clark King for, uh.
Estimates.
For estimates, and the other ones, I'm trying to push him to find out, when can we get the other ones, because the ones that he, that, that he did do are like, you know, they were in the top ten, certainly, but I'd like to get some of the other ones moving also.
Sure.
So, so we'll, uh, we're, we're pushing along with that and trying to move that, move that forward. It's not gathering any dust, for sure. All right, um, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.